Okay, I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 27th, 2020, Board of Library Trustees Meeting.
So we have minutes.
Did everyone have the opportunity to read over the minutes?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes and I would like discussion after the second.
Okay, I'll second the motion. And discussion?
Okay, just a real minor thing on the foundation. We, it says that a maximum of $3 per craft of the take and make. It was a guideline. A suggested maximum, a sa- suggested amount of $3 a craft. But I wanted to make sure the library had flexibility in case they found something they wanted for more expensive. So if that could be amended, that would be good.
So you want to add in any suggested maximum price?
Add a suggestion. Yeah, that would be fine.
Well, it was in there, but I think what Linda's saying is it shows in the minutes at $3 a craft. But wasn't it, wasn't it $3, was it, were there two price points or was it $5 for both adults versus kids?
Well, it was actually a suggested amount of $3 per craft with flexibility for an increase if the library staff felt it was appropriate, something like that. We never gave a maximum. But we wanted to allow the flexibility in case the library staff who was doing the crafts found something they liked that was more than $3 per craft. And we did mention how the adult crafts might be more expensive than the crafts for the younger audience.
Okay, so the amendment, it's to amend it to read, "The staff is making a variety of take and make crafts for different age groups, which will be paid for by the foundation at a maximum of $5 per craft."
No, we never said a maximum. It is suggested cost of $3 a craft, per craft with flexibility for a high amount if the library staff feels appropriate. Finds a more expensive craft.
Okay, so you wanted to read, "Will be paid for by the foundation at a cost, at a suggested cost." Okay.
Suggested cost.
Suggested cost of $3 per craft with a maximum of $5 per craft.
Well, we never really set the maximum.
Okay, just tell me how you want it to read, Linda, so I can.
Okay, yeah, at a suggested cost of $3 per craft with flexibility for the library to increase this amount. How's that? With the flexibility for the library to increase this amount.
Okay.
We didn't want to play their hands and we trusted them.
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Okay, I'll call for a vote of the amended minutes. Did everyone hear me?
Hi, Teresa.
Hi, I'm Anna Candy.
Yep.
Yeah.
I? Are we all in favor of the amended minutes?
Linda?
John?
Teresa is.
Corinne is.
Diana is.
John's in.
Great, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
So Director's Report for Statistics. Trends seen in previous months are continuing. Checkouts of print materials since last month have increased 23%. They are still down 43% from pre-COVID levels. Overdrive eBooks dropped a little bit. They've gone over 700 checkouts. They're a little bit below this month, but they are still up 80% from the same time last year. So again, trends are pretty much continuing. A lot of digital use still. Financial update, salary spending is on track. Expenses is up slightly from what it should be this time of year. But that's most likely due to the fact we talked about before, how our revolving fund is not bringing in what it usually does. So we're having to rely on our other expenses line more. So I am, as I said, I'm going to keep an eye on that and see how it progresses throughout the year. The financial report for state aid was submitted on October 14th. So we are all set with every, all the reporting forms are in for state aid. So we should get some news later this year about what award amount will be given. For programming, about 45 people tuned in for the Jenna Elliott organizing workshop. And we've talked before how we got a lot of positive feedback. The Peter Jamero author talk was very well received. We had 21 participants for that. He shared examples of how we had dealt with instances of racial injustice in his past. And we sent out a list of diversity themed books to all the participants afterward. And we had several virtual kids programs in September, a Baby Yoda art class, a back to school theme program. And attendance for kids programs was 29 for that month. Any questions about any of those?
I had one question, actually.
Yeah?
The financial, you have mentioned a couple of times how the revolving fund is down, which makes sense. But are expenses down due to the copy not being used as much or is that pretty much a stable cost?
It is pretty much a stable cost. You get, you know, we have a lease and we pay a certain amount each month and it doesn't really, because we get so many copies. So if we go over the amount that we're allotted, then we have to pay extra. But if it's under, we just pay the monthly lease amount. So it's pretty.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Moving on to building maintenance, I'm actually going to be meeting with the town administrator on Thursday. So it's looking like we're going to have to have a new phone system installed. We, we've always had problems with our phones and usually the issue is with Verizon. And we call them and they come and fix it and it's never perfect. You know, we've always had some, a little bit of interference inside, but it's been manageable. But within the last month, I would say, it's gotten pretty bad. The lines, I don't know if some of you have called and noticed, a lot of static. And I did have Verizon come out recently. They did fix something, but then it didn't really seem to help. So I had somebody come back and they said that the problem is inside of our building. So I had a phone tech come out to check and they said that the power supply for our phone system is failing. And it's so old that they don't have, they don't make replacement parts for it anymore. So we are going to have to get a new phone system. So I'm going to talk to them about funding options and then possibly talk to the IT director about technology, you know, maybe upgrading the technology. So, you know, I mean, there's really, it's for the whole building. It's us and the senior center. So I have made Mary aware of it, but it's, you know, sometimes it gets so bad now that we can't even hear people talk. We're definitely going to have to move forward on this pretty quickly. I'm also going to be, well, actually this Thursday, also the building inspector is coming to just do a regular inspection. So I'm also going to be bringing up to him and the town administrator when I meet with them about siding issues. We're doing that spring, which we.
Karen, can you repeat that? The building inspector is coming?
Yeah, on Thursday for an inspection. And then when I talk to the town administrator Thursday and then he's coming later on Thursday. So I'll also mention it to him, the siding, how we want to move forward with that in the spring. So I'll be discussing that with them as well.
With the town administrator or the building inspector or?
Both, both, yeah.
Okay.
We had said maybe while the building inspector is in the building, he could look at the area. We have the leak is continuing to make sure there's no mold.
Yeah, that's part of the siding. They think that's what's causing that. So I'm definitely going to mention that to him again. And then also we talked about the heating system. There's another person coming out tomorrow to look at that from the town planner sending them out. The town's trying to do an energy efficient grant. So I'm still waiting to hear on that to see status, if it can be replaced with the grant instead of town fund.
That's, sorry, that's the heating system?
Yes, yeah. Okay, just other, some other miscellaneous things. The ALA is putting out a grant called Libraries Transforming Communities. And I'm going to look into see if we can apply for that. It's would award small libraries $3,000 for a community engagement project. There are two rounds. One is the deadline is December and then there's another one in the spring. The, some of the ideas, maybe it's like a one book, one community, something like that. Or maybe doing something like along the lines of the diversity talk we did, continuing that, doing some diversity themed programming. So I'm still thinking about, it's going to depend on, I feel like we have enough staff time to do that grant. So I'm still looking into it, what the requirements are. We're also trying to partner with the schools about a program through Overdrive that lets students use their school cards to access our Overdrive collection. I think they're already starting to work with Whitman Library on it. So they're hoping to get us involved so that they can have access to Old Colony and Sales eBooks. So I'm waiting to hear on that one. The Friends are going to do a fundraiser. Some of you might have seen the advertiser doing signs, educational themed signs. We already have 12 pre-orders as of last week, I think. And we're going to be getting a kiosk that we're going to set up in here and then people can purchase them. And then as we've done in the past, I applied for a cultural council grant for museum passes. And then we're also going to do, Kate's going to apply for a second one for a summer reading program, hopefully in 2021. So we'll see how that goes. But whether it has to be virtual or in person, obviously we don't know yet. But she's going to try to find something for that. Any questions?
All looks good.
Okay, moving on to COVID-19, so updates on library services. Since our last meeting, we have expanded our hours for appointments. That's going very well. We've blocked off the first, last half hours of each day. Staff are, you know, using the time to do circ duties and get things ready for people to come in and do curbside. And they found that very helpful, having that time to kind of set things up. We are now being flogged twice a week, so Mondays and Wednesdays evenings, that's being done. And we also have changed our overdue reminder notice schedule. We had some people who are, now we have the longer quarantine for seven days. People were getting overdue notices, even though they returned an item and it was just still in quarantine. So we put, have sales push that back so that people aren't being notified incorrectly. And then I think I talked about, last time, about changing from doing appointments to just letting, you know, just limiting the number of people that come in, but not having to do appointments. But right now, I feel like with this being in the red zone and cases look like they're going up, I'd like to kind of keep things, I don't want to really make any changes now. So I kind of want to keep things the way they are, at least for now. And then hopefully maybe in another, you know, we'll kind of see where, how things go in the next couple of months to see if we're able to change that. I do feel like it's, could be a little bit of an obstacle to some people, having to call for an appointment. But like I said, I'd rather not change anything right now with the way things seem to be going. So any questions about any of that?
Could you give us an idea of how many people a day do come into the library by appointment?
So it's averaging about 15 people a day.
Okay, good.
I mean, sometimes it's, you know, 10 and other times it's 25, but averaging is about 15.
Thank you.
Okay, I can move on to, so request amount for equipment and furniture for print release. So I think we talked before about, I wanted to try, right now, the print release station, so if somebody needs to print something, it goes through Julia's desk, her computer there. We have the printer behind, behind her desk. So I wanted to get a computer and some furniture to set up the printer and the computer in the center of the library so that, and then a coin machine, so that people would be able to do it. You know, it would all be patrons and they would go up to the computer themselves. They would release their print job, pay for it. So, you know, minimizing staff interaction. A couple of items I'm hoping can go through COVID funds and be paid for that way. But there's some, a couple of things that we can't do through that, the computer in particular. So I was hoping, I'd like to request that you approve up to $1,500 for me to spend to purchase any, the computer and other equipment and furniture that can't go through the COVID funds to get that set up.
I'll make a motion to allow Karen to spend up to $1,500 for the equipment not able to be purchased through special COVID funds as described.
I'll second it. And is there any questions concerned?
Can I just read back my scribbles of the motion? Give me one second.
I should probably, I have Karen list the individual things. I didn't, sorry.
All right, allow Karen to spend up to $1,500 for furniture and equipment.
He's a for a print release station.
For a print release station. I wish you could see how fast I'm writing. All right, so allow Karen to spend up to $1,500 for furniture and equipment for print release stations that cannot be covered with COVID funds.
Yeah, that sounds great. Yep.
All in favor?
And who was, who seconded that?
I did, Corinne.
Teresa votes yes. I was just saying, yes, I'm voting yes.
Corinne.
Diana, yes.
Linda, yes.
John?
John, yes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, so, I'm sorry?
On purchasing, could I just ask a question? Seems that the mobile hotspots are very, very popular. I looked at how people had them reserved and all. Do you feel too adequate at this point?
Well, I was going to see kind of how, you know, how they went out. And just in terms of cost, though, I wasn't sure right now that we could afford to get any extra, especially if, you know, like I said, I kind of wanted to see how popular they were here. I expect them to be popular, so we, you know, maybe going forward, we'll have to look at getting more. But I just thought too, trying to just start with to see how, how things went with them.
Okay, I had looked at the reservations and it didn't look like they were really available. That's why I was wondering.
Okay, yeah.
Tell right now. And the other thing, if these are so popular, I think we mentioned possibly having some electronic devices for patrons. Is that something you'd want to consider?
Yeah, I mean, right now, one of the things I wanted to get was Chromebooks, but there's, I think there's about 6 million backordered. So to get them is, you know, it's going to be, it'd be a while. So, you know, that's something that once kind of we have all this other stuff set up, that I would definitely want to look into. Maybe once it kind of, and even a lot of the other technology, like there's a lot of waitlist for them.
I didn't, I wondered actually if sales had any in with some of the backorders.
Yeah.
Look online at any of them, there's very minimal available and you have to purchase that way.
Yeah.
Okay, just.
Linda, were you inquiring about with regards to the hotspots? How many, how much they're being used or about getting more?
Both. If the, if the, it appeared from the sign out on the calendar events that they're being very heavily used and not readily available. I didn't know if that was accurate. But I guess we'll wait and see when we have.
I'll have to check. I haven't checked on it and just see what, make sure that that's accurate too. Because since it's a new system setup, I want to make sure it's running all right.
All right, so Karen, you'll check on it and report back at the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
They seem so popular though.
Okay, recap of the meeting. So I'll just start off and then Corinne, I'll pass it over to you. So Corinne and I met with the Selectmen on September 29th. We went over the letter that we, we sent to them. And I gave them an update on the status of the construction grant program from the state. I think the meeting went very well. They were very open to us being involved in the discussion. You know, we talked about libraries, you know, future library services, what that might look like. And so they are going to try to have Corinne added to both McQuan and Plymouth County committees. I did speak to Greer the other day and she's working on figuring out how to get that set up so that we can be added to a November meeting and have her join them. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Corinne?
No, that about wraps it up. I did call Mara and she told me to call.
Mara at the MBLC, is it?
Yes, she said you could check with John to check with town council as far as, should I be just, you know, coming to all the meetings and not having any voting rights? Because to me, if there's a motion in regards to the library, I have to abstain. So maybe you could talk to John about that and he could talk to Kate. And, oh, I don't have it in front of me. She told me to have someone to call in Boston to check with also. But then by the time she got back to me, it was the day before my surgery. So I really have to wait till next week to, if I have a move around, go to sit and make phone calls.
Corinne, I'm not sure that that's true, that you have to abstain. On the committees that are appointed, you know, for instance, I sit on the CPC and I sit on that on behalf of the Housing Authority. And so anytime Housing Authority business comes up, I speak to that issue. And I obviously speak to it, you know, on behalf of the Housing Authority. And I know that, you know, for instance, the, the, the Parks and Fields, they also have different representatives. So I think you can certainly sit on the committees and sit on it, you know, with the library's perspective.
Okay, all right, sounds good. But would you just, we'll just check with John then, just to make sure everybody's comfortable.
Yeah.
And it will come up later on.
Yeah, okay.
The Selectmen, when we presented this, they weren't really sure about all that, so.
Yeah. I think Greer was working on it to see.
Right. And the later, well, I was, I had started to watch the beginning of the Selectmen meeting tonight. And they gave the date for the next Selectmen meeting. I think there's one for November. It is the 3rd and the 17th. And then I think December 1st. They gave three dates, so.
All right, we may have to wait till December then, because I think we're probably going to have to have a meeting on the 17th so that to vote for the budget.
Right, and I'm thinking also, I think it would be easier for me, by then I can drive.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, just a clarification. What was the date that you met with the Selectmen?
September 29th.
And it's to get Corinne added, hopefully to get her added to the committees or to the agenda?
No, to the, to the committees, the McQuan reuse and Plymouth County hospital reuse.
Okay, that's what I wrote. So I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
They didn't have a problem with that and they were very happy with what we, you know, presented, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they're posted on YouTube, so if any of you want to go back and look at that portion of the meeting. And then did you have any, did you, were there any other McQuan or Plymouth County meetings that you went into since our last meeting? No, okay.
No one's contacted me. Matt always contacts me and I don't think the reuse has done, I mean, the McQuan has had anything going on. But, but soon we'll have more information.
Okay. Okay, we can move on to foundation. I just had one thing I wanted to say before you, if you have anything, Linda. We talked at the last meeting about the quarry, quarrying, possibly quarrying foundation volunteers. And I contacted Mara at the MBLC and I'll just kind of summarize what she said. So she said, she, she had worked as an assistant director. And she said that from her personal experience, volunteers were only quarried if they were going to be working in any capacity with children. At her library, they had a children's book sale and a main book sale. And they only quarried friends' volunteers if they worked at the children's book sale. She said you could always have a policy that requires any volunteer in any capacity to be quarried. But the way she sees it is that if, if it's like, it's a foundation sponsored event, then they're the ones running it. And so that would kind of be similar to quarrying like a outside performer that you would get, which that's not typically done. So it kind of fits with what we already have right now. She, both libraries just have policies about volunteers that are actually working in the library, like shelving, things like that, which is along the lines of what we have now. So I'm comfortable with basically kind of keeping things the way they are.
If we had a children's program, what would that be? Say we hired someone for a children's program and we sponsored, where's the responsibility and the?
Right, I mean, that might be the only issue. So if there are foundation volunteers at a children's program, then, you know, she said that in her children's department, they were very strict about not using volunteers for youth programs. But, you know, I know obviously we do have, you know, we have like the skating brink, you know, usually we have that every year. So that might be an instance where we would want to have them quarried, you know, ahead of time.
Skating, it's usually two directors that go to the meeting.
Yeah. But I mean, if, I mean, but if it's a foundation sponsored event, I think that's what she was saying, that you wouldn't, it would be more like if we had a library event, I guess, and then they had foundation people volunteering. A library kids event, which we don't really typically, that doesn't typically happen. So I think kind of it, with the, with the skating thing, that actually, because it's a foundation event, you would sort of be seen as more like an outside performer, which you wouldn't quarry. Does that make sense?
It would, excuse me, you broke up. It would be seen as what?
It would be seen as, as if you were, the foundation members were like outside performers, so you wouldn't quarry them.
Okay.
That.
It would be hosted at a different venue. I assume that they take the responsibility of their employees.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
What is Mara's last name?
DeeDee, D-E-E-D-Y.
Thanks, I was drawing a blank.
So that's all I had. If you had something you wanted to add for foundation, Linda?
Okay, Pam had said she'd go over some of the updates for the baskets. I can read you some of what she told me. She, let's see.
I can give a report if.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you, Teresa.
Yeah, so I went by on Saturday and we had, we put out a cloth and I took pictures of all the baskets. You know, with sort of the books behind them in the library. So I think that they look good and standardized and they did an amazing job. She and Erin were working very hard at putting bows on everything and getting them all organized. I probably took pictures of probably 25 different baskets or, you know, arrangements. And I know that Corinne has some additional ones.
Right. She has sent me pictures of all the different baskets, what's in them, so I'm giving her the price points.
Right, so I think where I've downloaded and gone through and edited all the photos and what I just need from her is she had a, she had a page that had the written kind of summary of each basket. She just needs to send that to me with the written, the price. And then I can start posting them on the foundation Facebook page.
Okay, and I'll take care of that by tomorrow. I've already given her some.
Okay.
And my question was, usually when we had private, when it was a silent auction, we had a little sign in of the item, telling what it was and what's in it and the dollar sign. sign in of the item, telling what it was and what's in it, and the dollar sign, are we still doing that, or there'll be, there'll just be a?
I think we should have that still, and if, if you guys send me the stuff, I'm happy to print them out, and, you know, we can put them in front of the basket, because, you know, people are making appointments to walk through, and, you know, they're not bidding on them, they're buying them this time around, but it's still nice to have, I think each basket should have a name, and, and then a little description, and then the price next to it, and on a little card, and I can print that out on stock and, and have it for each basket.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that does sound great, thank you, Teresa and Corinne.
I will be back here next week, because I got some more things in, I, well, I have the blankets for the toddlers with books, and I had books picked out that were practically new for my son, and I have no idea where I put them, so I just went and I bought a bunch of books, and so I'll put them together, so I'll be delivering those, and.
So I think Pam was going to try to swing by and get those from you, and then do her magic of presenting them in the beautiful way that she does, and then she was going to email me, and I'll come by and take photos.
Okay, all right, we haven't finalized that, so I'll be talking to her on the weekend anyway.
Okay, great.
She should be all set.
Okay, I do have a flyer, maybe I'll go over the details of it, and I will be sending out to the list serve shortly. The open house, consulting with Karen, our latest thought is we'll just run it from 9:30 to 2:30, where we're not having the outside portion, the hours when the libraries open that day, keep things consistent for the crafts and the snacks, et cetera. People will be able to sign up already on the library's website, calendar events, people can sign up for the kits that take and make crafts, they look wonderful, there's five different ones, look like a lot of fun and going to be popular, and they're going to be able to pick them up curbside or make an appointment, starting on the day of the open house to pick up the kits, the grab and go snacks will be placed both outside, on a table spread out, we will need a little sign telling people to please take one per person, courtesy of the foundation, and they'll be set up inside on the table, I guess, for the same. The art show is on the flyer that the library's organizing for the fifth year, when is it going to be announced, at 11 o'clock that day? And we're saying there's appointment shopping, the debut of the foundation shopping fundraiser to benefit our library, 9:30 to 2:30, visitors have the opportunity to do their holiday shopping by purchasing a variety of items, including gift baskets, toys, sports themed fleece throws. Items sold out last year, so don't miss this opportunity for first access to shop, make an appointment for a half hour shopping spot by calling 712-932-1511, then Karen suggested we promote the 1,000 books before kindergarten for that day, too, so I think organize for the Alternative Open House Day, any questions or comments on that?
Oh, sounds good.
Yeah, we're really relying on the library staff, and we appreciate their assistance under these circumstances.
This is saying, can I just get some clarification on my question? So, the open house will run from 9:30 to 2:30, the snacks will be placed outside on the table with a sign, each craft, they reserve them?
Yep.
They sign up at the calendar events on the library's website to reserve one.
All right, reserve ahead of time for the take and make craft, now that will be available by curbside pickup or by appointment.
Right.
Our show winners will be announced that day, gift baskets, you can start the shopping, and we're going to promote the 1,000 books before kindergarten.
Right, I can send you all that, I'm looking at the flyer in front of me, as soon as we log off, that might help you a little bit, some people have. Now, I did want some input and clarification after the Alternative Open House basket sales and the items, we're going to continue purchases in the library by appointment, correct?
Yes, that's what we've done before.
Right.
The gift basket.
Right. Do we need anything, the library will take payment, it will have to be cash or check, and will there be updates on like Facebook at all, is that possible of what's still available, or how do we do that, or do we just leave it in the library for people to browse and see what's available?
We can try to monitor and see if, and we can do some posts that you guys can share.
That would be wonderful, okay, that's up to date posts, and I think we have to see how the sales go possibly, and consider at some point if the items aren't moving, adjusting prices, how do you feel about that, and who's going to be responsible, or don't you like that idea?
I think you should just save the baskets if they're not moving, and then have them to be sold over a period of time between now and the holidays.
Oh, I meant come close to the holidays, if they have.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if it was like, you know, say 10 days before, and we had a few baskets left, then I think we probably should have justified moving.
Okay, that's a good guideline, I think.
Too early, because with them doing it by appointment, you don't have as many people as we've had in the past, so.
Right, and I think in the past, we've always somewhat set bargain prices, I don't know if that's what's going to happen this time around, too, so that'll play into how the basket sell. Okay, we'll have to just see how things go a little bit, and be flexible, I think. Okay, anyone have anything else on the appointment shopping?
No, I don't.
Okay, after the open house, I think we'll try and get out a separate press release, there has been a press release sent to the express on the open house, and after the open house will continue to promote the appointment shopping in various places, okay, that all sounds good to me, thank you.
Okay, good.
Do you have anything else for foundation?
Not at this point, we will be working shortly on membership drive, but we don't have to talk about that at this point.
Okay, so I just want to mention before we go, that, so the next meeting, we'll have to meet on the 17th of November, same time, 6:30, we, I should be getting this week, they're going to, I think, send out budget, information about the budget for FY22, it's due, going to be due November 20th, so I'll be working on that, and then we could, you know, you can approve it at the November 17th meeting, so we'll have to meet before then, at that time.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, we'll plan on doing that, all right, I don't have anything else, so.
Well, I'm going to the Board of Library Trustees meeting, October 27th, 2020, 7:14 PM. All in favor, second?
Oh, second, Diana.
All in favor, yes, Corinne?
Linda, yes.
Teresa, yes.
Diana, yes.
John, yes.
Okay, all right, well, have a good night, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.